This conference will now be recorded.
All right, the meeting is being recorded. Welcome to the Warren County, May 4th. No cost for public hearing, old items of discussion. One quick thing I wanted to raise is that the Pennsylvania Grade Crude Coalition reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and we had a, just I just informed you about it. I think they emailed each of us individually too, asking that we would support a, write a letter of support for a stimulus bill that would essentially pay for out of work oil and take orphaned wells and plug them. I believe, at least I'm supportive, before I read a letter, though I just wanted to make sure that you two are also all right with that. At least me initiating a letter of support.
I'm supportive. I actually just received some correspondence from Jay Curtis, Curtis Well Service Company, asking the same thing. The Orphan Wealth Stimulus Program, you know, if we would write a letter in, in support of that. And then also he went on to ask that we contact G.T. Thompson and talk about some federal stimulus legislation. Get to include language that would give Governor Walz some flexibility in spending money coming to P.A. So, I guess a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea too, not only because it helps an industry that is down, but also because unlike a lot of stimulus programs, we're actually getting a product out of it. I mean, the orphan well issue is something that I know is a big concern for both industry and environmentalists. So it's kind of a win-win in my opinion, almost akin to like the CCC programs. So Jeff, any objections?
Yeah, no, I think that I definitely support the concept. You know, obviously whatever the details were would be, you know, I'd want to see that, but just generally the idea, yes. And I think that with the situation with the oil market being what it is, and it was bad to begin with, and now it's just catastrophic. So I think that the potential for, you know, abandoned wells and just kind of all kinds of just, you know, negative situations is, is a real possibility. So I, I definitely agree that that's worth looking at and pushing for.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion to bring up?
None here.
No, just wanted to take a couple of minutes and talk about the reopening for the county. Just run the line, just a couple of things. One is the district justice offices apparently are not open until Monday, the 11th. I wasn't specifically aware of that. Everything else has gone very well. So we're screening at the front of the building. The sheriff's office has done a wonderful job of, of kind of managing that and putting it together or assisting with the launch of it. We, we didn't have the mad rush, the Black Friday, you know, surge that we expected on Monday. You know, I guess, I guess the courthouse isn't quite as popular as everybody thought. But no, it's been a very manageable stream of people. And then all of the, the shields, I've gone around and we've checked all the shields and all the other stuff that's been put together and everybody's very happy with it. There are very few issues with it. I, I wanted to just say a couple of things. One is a big thank you to Matt Nordine and to Randy, the maintenance crew. They did a really amazing job putting together the shields. If you get a chance, check them out. They, they're, they basically took Plexiglas and they did some really neat carpentry on it. So it looks like they're almost built into the, the end of the rooms. They're really neat, but they did a really great job to make it tasteful, which I was impressed with. And then finally, I also wanted to thank Pam Matt V and, you know, and everybody else. They, Pam did a really wonderful job securing materials, getting cleaning products together, working with, you know, B.E.I. and everybody else to try to get everything lined up, you know, and just really did, went above and beyond to try to assist with that. And then finally Attorney Schmidt did a really wonderful job helping with the, putting together the protocols. So I feel like the county's in a really good place, very safe and, and will operate this way until, you know, we feel like we're ready to transition. So I just wanted to throw that out there. That it looks, everything looks really good.
I think Tricia and I would like to thank you for spending so much time mulling over that document and, you know, kind of being the hands-on project manager. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, you did a great job with that. And I did see some of those shields. They are very tastefully done. So out of the team.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of, I was really impressed, like having done carpentry with my dad, I just assumed that there'd be Plexiglas like bolted to something, you know, or something like that. And they really went, went all out with the, they've stained the wood and all kinds of stuff. It's really nice. So that's, and thank you.
All right. Two bigger items that we need to talk about today. The first is broadband task force. Commissioner Aggleston, again, you drafted the resolution and shared it with us last week. Did you want to say anything about it?
No, I'm really close to having the summary document to you. It's just that, that conversation just keeps coming up as a part of this overall shutdown of the county. So I don't know that it could be more timely. So I think it's a really great thing that everybody's, we're all moving forward together on this. And I've also had conversations with agencies that have, that are getting access to funding because the Fed and others are opening up funding for broadband projects because of the need to stay home and telework and, and education. So it's really a good time.
Commissioner Aggleston, you sent a resolution, a draft resolution. Is that the final one for next week's meeting?
Let me just double check with Schmidt. I think that he had a couple minor changes to it and then we'll get you the final today.
Okay, thank you.
Pam, I will, I'll check with Jeff here when we're, when we're done with our meetings.
Thank you.
All right, anything more on broadband? Very good. Next topic of discussion, which will be the more lengthy discussion is on election. For that, Lisa Rivet is on the phone. Pam, we are going to have a election meeting this week, correct?
Yeah. On Friday.
Friday, right. 11, okay, very good. This is kind of a precursor, correct? We're, we're gonna cover a bunch of different topics. And one thing to talk about would be reaching out to the Amish and a question from Pine Grove. And then Commissioner Aggleston and Lisa, you worked together to figure out other subcomponents, yes? All right, and I'll just turn it over to Lisa then to lead us to discussion.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So we, Lisa and I had a, I had a bunch of bullet points to just run through. So a lot of this will just be me asking her questions and then you guys chiming in when you have questions. So the first thing is Lisa has picked out two staffers that are basically going to assist her from here through the primary election. And nine tenths of their work is going to be answering the phone and also processing the mail-in ballots. The folks are going to be, they're going through background checks right now. They're regular poll workers, so Lisa feels very confident in their ability to work objectively. And they should be, if they accept the positions, they should start working almost immediately. This is a big issue because of the increase in mail-in ballots. And Lisa, would you like to talk for a moment about your experience at this point with the mail-in ballots and what the increase has been and how that's kind of, you know, this is, this is an important thing for you?
Right. Normally in a presidential primary election, I process about 300 to 400 mail, or absentee ballots. These mail-ins plus the absentee, I think I'm almost a 2,000. And they're coming in daily. The, the interest is great. I'd say about 95% of these people that have applied, whether through the mail or online, are also checking the box to be on the annual mail-in or annual absentee request list, which means they would automatically be sent the application next year for that year's elections. Now, these applications are good for the primary and the general election this year. So they're, they're applying now, we're processing them. And then in the shore system, what it does is it creates a ballot label for them for the fall. So they don't have to reapply in the fall. They automatically get their ballot sent to them in the fall. So in the fall, you've got all these people plus the, the third part is independent, so no affiliations. They have to apply fall. So it's going to increase more in the fall, I believe.
Very good.
Is there a, so Lisa, are people coming to your office and, and looking for applications as well or?
Most, most people are either calling me or emailing me. And then the Republican Party sent out applications and that's the bulk of the ones I'm getting back. You know, somebody calls and says they want an absentee or a mail-in ballot application. I kind of ask them a few questions, just like they get asked on the website. You know, are you going to be in a town? Are you ill? If that's the case, then you get an absentee. If you just don't want to go to the polls because it's a no excuse one, then they get the, the mail-in application. They're similar, but they're different. I mean, you know, but the, the ones that the Republican Party sent out a lot of time. And now people are hearing about it and wanting that. Now this morning, I, I did put on the website, the 2020 absentee application and 2020 mail-in ballot. It can be downloaded. So if they go to the website, that's going to increase more than, you know, we'll do the mail-in.
Yes, that's the other piece that this is, is that we're going to be doing a, a drive, like a mail-in vote drive to go, to go along with the state's efforts. You know, and so we're expecting even more when that happens. So that's another piece to the puzzle is trying to figure that out.
And the difference too is before we could do postmarks. So if somebody mailed their application in on the last day to apply, then I'd have to process it. Now, whatever's in my office at five o'clock on, I believe it's the 25th of May, will get processed. The rest will be rejected. And then when the ballots are coming back in, they have until eight o'clock on election night to have them in my office, where before there was a cutoff of the Friday before. Now they've got all data bringing into us in the office.
Yeah.
Would it make any sense to kind of do a, like a, a drive by the courthouse and hand out applications or would that not be efficient?
I think if you did that, you'd get a lot of duplicates because, because honestly I'm getting, you know, quite a few duplicates because people filled out the Republican one that were sent out and then they go online and apply. So, you know, whichever one I do first is one I process and then the other one gets rejected. But I, I was thinking, you know, could we put the applications out in post offices, you know, like the Russell Post Office, the Warren Post Office? You know, that kind of stuff. To get the foot traffic, you know, or the even, I don't think the library's open, but I mean, post offices are still open. So why couldn't we put them in some of the libraries or, or the post offices or something like that? Because it would just be the application and they would still have to fill it out and mail it in to me.
Right. No, I think that's a good idea. I, I, and then we can maybe get some, you know, marketing out there that shares that information so the public knows it.
Right. And plus now with the courthouse being open, they can come in and apply and get their ballot while they're there and vote it while they're there. You know, we couldn't do that before because the courthouse was closed, but now we can do that too. So, you know, might see a little more foot traffic and, you know, somebody could bring a completed application in to me and want their ballot now, which is perfectly doable.
Josh, is there any way you can mute your microphone just when you're not talking? It sounds like a lot of background noise. Yeah, thanks.
You're probably picking up my keyboard, sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's something in the background there. That's a, that's a, so Lisa, how big is the application? I haven't looked at it yet. Is it a single sheet?
It's basically name, address, where you want it mailed to.
Eight and a half by 11 sheet.
Yeah, it's eight and a half by 11 sheet and, you know, the absentee one's a little longer because you have the opportunity to put your doctor's informations in. But I need name, address, social security, last of our social, driver's license, where you want it mailed to, and that's it. Especially for the mailing because there's no excuse. A very simple application.
So the, so the point being like if we printed a bunch of them up just on eight and a half by 11 sheets, we could, you could leave them like at restaurants and at post offices and stuff like that. And, and then people could, yeah. Okay, so that might be something to look into. And, and I think that the question with a lot of this stuff too is, is that the state has funding available for this election. And so all of this stuff could be written off through that so that we're not actually paying for it locally. So I mean, that's something to consider as well.
Is there any other thoughts on what other efforts can be made to get those applications out?
Absolutely. Yeah, any, any suggestions would definitely be welcome.
I mean, you know, they can go online and apply and get them electronically. As long as you have a valid P.A. driver's license, you can do it that route.
So just transitioning to the, the cost bit, just wanted to say that I had a conversation with Lisa and we're gonna talk with Eric and have a method to track all expenses related to this election so that we can make sure that we get reimbursed from the state for any additional costs related to this, you know, effort, all these efforts.
Jeff, with, with that extra cost, will the, the two ladies that are coming in to help, will that be reimbursed?
We're definitely going to try. I think that every, like every, every single expense that would be out of the ordinary, I think we need to, to log and then try to get reimbursement for it. Because otherwise we're going to have to pull it out of the contingency fund and other things. And I'd much rather, you know, somebody's going to get the money in the state. I'd rather it us be, rather it be us, I guess.
Yep, I agree.
Back on the suggestions on how to get this out. I know Josh will put something in the paper. What about Mark Silvest on the radio?
I, I think that once we're, we've got all the stuff lined up on the site so that everything's the way that we want it and the wording's the way we want it and it's visible, we'll do a news release with all the info in it. So, and then, and then maybe even have some other conversations about ways to promote it. You know, I just want to be able to have people come to the site and go from point A to point B. So we're, which we're really close to having that together. So but yeah, no, Mark Silveston would definitely be notified as a part of that.
A lot of times they read it in the paper on their newscast too.
Yeah, Mark's pretty good about, and, and the local radio folks are usually pretty good about reading that if there's an article that they don't have access to.
Other thing to note, this would probably be a good time to mention, should we have specific outreach to the Amish community?
That used to be David Bauer.
And honestly, the Amish don't normally vote in a presidential election. They only vote in an election where they are promoting like a township supervisor. So I'm not sure that you would have a lot of hits on that, but could be, you know, but history shows that they only vote.
Whether they vote or not is not ours to decide. If they're registered voters, we should make an effort and
Okay.
Not necessarily.
One thing that I was going to throw out that, that we might want to consider is to include something in the bill, the, the tax bills for voting. Because those get mailed out to all property owners, it might be worth it to have like an application included in it and maybe have like a small flyer that explains the effort. That would be one way that we wouldn't have to double pay for postage. There'd be a cost to inserting the stuff just because there'd be a little bit more time, but that's just something I'd, I'd throw out there as a consideration.
What about like the municipal offices? Could we send them applications out to their offices and have them, you know, I don't know how much foot traffic those kind of offices get, but.
They get some. I mean, I think the thing is, is just to get a bunch printed up and then start circulating them. You know, I think that's the, you know, because we could have people run around and drop that stuff off. And the municipal offices are usually pretty good about working with us on stuff like that. So do you want to talk, Lisa, about the, the state issuing kits, like the cleaning materials at the location?
The state is going to issue kits to us for the polling places, for the poll workers, masks, gloves, hand sanitizer. I don't exactly know what's all in these kits because they really haven't said, but they're automatically going to issue these kits to us. Some we may have to break down, you know, if we have a smaller precinct and they only need three masks and somebody else needs five or whatever. But I, I haven't gotten an ETA on those, but those are supposed to be coming also. And then I've gotten hand sanitizer from Kim to include in the bags. And Jeff and I talked this morning that possibly, you know, talk to Public Safety and see if they could get us a larger bottle of hand sanitizer for each polling precinct that we could put at the entrance, exit for, for the folks. Because these kits that we're getting from the state are only for the poll workers. And then possibly if we need more supplies, talking to Pam about, you know, extra masks or extra gloves and that kind of stuff.
And Lisa, there were a number of municipalities that hadn't gotten back in touch with you as far as having their polling places covered.
I'm down to, I'm down to three now. I've talked to more people since I sent that email out and I'm just, Clarendon's one, Cherry Grove's another one. Those are my two big ones that, you know, my, I don't want to say big precincts, but those are two of the main ones that I have not heard back from.
Okay, all right.
But I'm whittling that list down.
And what, what was this discussion on, Tricia? I missed your question.
Well, Lisa had reached out to the municipalities to understand whether the workers, that they were be covered or if they had chosen to not be at the polls. That's all.
Okay.
So I reached out to the judges of elections to make sure that everybody had full boards. And like I said in that one email I sent out, you know, Sheffield's covered now with a full board too. So.
Great. I just don't know if there's a, you know, if there's a situation where they're not going to be covered. I know that we had to reach out to the Commonwealth or do something. And I just didn't know what the timing of that would be compared to when the election will be.
Right. I think we have like 15 days for, for the election. We consolidate anybody that we need to. And I'm going to try and reach out 15 days before the election.
So far, it looks pretty good though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, we, there was some concern at the beginning, but after Lisa kind of going through and calling everybody, I think we feel pretty good that it's, that everybody's going to be available. So.
This will be the first election that Warren South will be at St. Joe's with Warren West. And one of the poll workers, her name is Pat Christie. She works at St. Joe's a lot, the kitchen and stuff. So she contacted them to see if they could use the gym. So, and they said yes. So Warren South will be on one end of the gym and Warren West will be on the other end of the gym. So it's going to be more room for people to keep six feet between them and, you know, the slower traffic and that kind of stuff. So.
That's a good idea. Great.
And with no school, it made it kind of easy. You know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah, that'll work out great. One of the things that I wanted to highlight real quick was just the mail-in ballot bit is a new thing. Like, I mean, I realize people have been doing absentee ballots, but just the straight mail-in. And there's one, I, I just wanted to state that when Lisa gets a mail-in ballot, there's a barcode on it. And she scans it so, so that it's registered in the system. So after the fact, someone could contact the courthouse and check to see if their vote has been received. I just want to stress that because there's been some misinformation going around about ballots disappearing or that, you know, that it gets lost in the mail or something. A, a person who's, who has voted should, is able to, has, has mailed in their ballot is able to check to make sure that they voted. Just want that to be clear, like it isn't.
And just to build on that, if someone has applied for an absentee or mail-in ballot and received it, I'm going to give you two different scenarios. So they apply for an absentee or mail-in. I mail it to them and they receive it, but they didn't return it before election day. What happens, okay, so then they decide, well, I'm not sure if my ballot's there or not. So, you know, I think I'll go to the polls and vote. Well, on the, their section on the poll book, it's going to say absentee mail-in or whatever. So the only way they can vote at the polls is provisional balloting. And then we have to determine whether their ballot, their actual ballot arrived here first or the provisional ballot arrived here first. So, you know, we have to be aware of that. And that's something I need to do an information sheet for my poll workers to explain all that to them. So if they have, and only one of those two will count. So whichever ballot gets to the courthouse first, so say they mailed their ballot two days before the election. They weren't sure if it was going to get here in time. Well, then it arrived on election day, but then they went to the polls. So the ballot that arrives first is the one that will be counted. So in this case, the ballot they mailed in would be counted. The provision would be rejected. Okay, so, so here's the second scenario. They mail it in, but they go, and they're not sure if it got there in time. So they go to the polls and vote. They're going, they vote provisional. So if their provisional gets to the courthouse election night, but their original ballot doesn't get here until the day after, the provisional will be what is counted. Does that make sense? So if the ballot arrives first is the one that's going to be counted, the other one will be rejected. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep.
I think that's, I think that's it. That's the first step we want to go with. Like in the next, the next week, we'll be doing our push. So we'll be circulating stuff to everybody to look at. And hopefully by Friday, because we have that election board meeting, we'll be able to make some more decisions on stuff there. But I think, I think all things considered, we're in a good position to have a safe and efficient election. Lisa's done a really good job.
Thank you. Josh, do you have any questions for your article?
Uh, no, just the Board of Elections meeting, is that gonna be online again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And Josh, you can put in like my email address if they want to email and ask me for an absentee or a mail-in ballot application or in my phone number, you can put all that in the article.
Will do.
So they can get ahold of me.
Not a problem.
Last thing to bring up, Lisa, did you want to talk to the, well, I guess we could either talk about it today or on Friday, but Pine Grove Township request.
Yeah, John Borts from Cable Hall Golf Course is wanting to get liquor at his restaurant, I guess, and he's gonna be wanting a ballot question on in the fall. Pine Grove Township has been dry, a dry township forever, as long as I can remember. And so he needs, we need to, you know, talk to him and, and get this going. I believe the cutoff date for him to get everything to us is gonna be early August. We need a plain English statement explaining what they're looking for and then a question. I worked with Julie, Julie, what's her last name? Hermener? She's the township secretary up there. We worked on this a couple of years ago and then the ball kind of got dropped, so I think now they're wanting to pick it up and run with it again. So I have some of the background already done, so we just, I just, we or I need to get ahold of, you know, talk to John Borts and, and give him some dates. The thing is, it's, it's like, if they want to do a ballot question, there's one of two ways to do it. Pine Grove Township supervisors can approve an ordinance, okaying to be put on the ballot, or they can do a petition with names on it. You know, it's like 2% of the highest vote getter in the last election or whatever. So I guess we need to figure out how they want to do that, so, but that's coming down the pike.
Has he talked to the Pine Grove supervisors about this?
Before he did, I don't know if he's talked to him recently. He called Ben this morning, did he say, Ben, if you talked to him or not?
I didn't ask.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would assume that we would just be reacting to whatever they request.
Right, and basically how it should go is they would write this stuff up and then they'd bring it into the Board of Elections and the Board of Elections would go over it and approve it or make changes or whatever to be put on the ballot.
Correct, that makes sense.
Yes. I mean, they can formulate everything and then we can, you know, make a final decision on the wording and the wording of the question and, because it can only be so many letter, or so many words long and it's a pretty simple thing, but it has to go to the voters because of the township being dry.
Right, but the supervisors have to take action in support of it first.
I would suggest it go that way, yes.
Right, it doesn't have to, but.
It doesn't have to, it's just, if they do an ordinance, they don't have to pass a petition around. If they don't do an ordinance, then they have to pass a petition around with so many names and, you know, so many signatures, that sort of thing.
Okay, so to be absolutely clear, the commissioner's role is really just as Board of Elections in this, and the request would be to approve a plain language statement and a question to be on the ballot. It could be in the fall or it could be next spring, whatever.
Well, preferably we try to keep questions like this on the fall ballot, only because everybody votes in the fall. Whereas you do it on a primary ballot, then you've got to make a separate ballot just for Pine Grove, you know, so.
That makes sense, so there's lots of time then, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, and I think the deadline is right around early to mid-August. They haven't looked that far ahead for this year, but, you know, they do have deadlines to get this stuff into us, so we have enough time to put it on the ballot.
Okay, I think that's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Anything more? Okay, I don't have any policy procedure update to you, Tricia?
Nope, I'm, I'm back in the office here and I'd compared a lot of the employee handbooks, gonna work probably with Meredith, who Ron has suggested. So there's some things that we need to keep in mind regarding that, but it's, it's nothing big.
Okay. Any active projects anyone wants to talk about? Anything to add to backlog? No? Okay. Upcoming commissioner, there's not one, so we'll step off next week. Any department updates? I think Ed's the only other director on, right?
Yeah, I'm here. My biggest thing is I'm getting hit really hard with questions on Memorial Day services.
On what services? I'm sorry, you got garbled there.
Memorial Day, which is coming up here in about three weeks. They want to know if they're being canceled.
Yeah, so I think my understanding was that we were gonna cancel it.
That's what I recall as well.
Well, they don't technically run one, right? The Veterans Council has one on our steps.
There's one held on the steps, there's various held throughout the county and all of them are calling wanting to know if Memorial Day services for this year are being, being canceled.
I, I mean, the commissioners don't have any power over it one way or the other, unfortunately. I can certainly ask the governor's office for clarification if you like.
I have sent a request and I got nowhere, but you may get further than I did.
I gotta talk to the governor's office anyway, so I'll, I'll bring it up, but I don't have anything that I'll.
I think the assumption would have to be, you know, with the limit, unless the limit on 25 people goes up to like 250, like if everything shifted to green, you know, under those parameters, at this point, I would say that the advice would be not to have that event. Because I don't see how there's any way to comply with that.
I think we can make the advice, we can't convince them one way or the other, but that would be what our position would be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we don't decide whether there's a Memorial Day or not. I mean, we proclaim that Memorial Day is Memorial Day, right? But that's a national holiday, so the individual organizations would have to determine whether they would have a gathering or not. My, my recommendation would be to not do that, just because you'd be, you know, violating state orders and then also putting everybody at risk.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff.
Anything else, Ed?
That's the biggest thing I wanted to talk about. Based on what I'm hearing, I'm just going to tell the people that the recommendation of the commissioners is not to have it, but they have to use their own judgment.
Sounds appropriately legal. You may have missed your law, Ed, or politics.
It's all fun.
All right, anything else? Anything to note on commissioner's schedules? So, you know, we're kind of back to normal. I think I have to knock off early tomorrow for a doctor's appointment or something, but otherwise I'd either be here at Public Safety.
Um, something that I wanted to talk to you about is the potential of having, like coordinating with the WCDA or some other organization as far as maybe helping businesses buy bulk materials. This is something that I keep meaning to talk to, I haven't had a chance to talk to Ken McCorson about, like, and the folks at the EOC, but during the conference calls that we've had over the past couple of weeks, one of the things that's been brought up is the idea of like a coordinated purchase of materials. I've talked to Ken, I should say I have talked to Ken about it. Ken is definitely thinks it's a good idea just to, to get everything together. But the idea would be that the businesses who are interested in getting like a bulk amount of materials and, and most of which would be masks, would go in together and we would just coordinate it with them so that they're getting a good price and that they're using a reliable vendor. With the interest in reopening, I think that that's something that we might want to be involved in, in order to help them. And I guess I'm just throwing that out there as, you know, the interest of the other two and what your thoughts are. Because I was gonna start contacting people about that today.
You were gonna contact the WCCDI about it?
Yeah, and a couple of the businesses that talked about it, the, I should state that the company that led the discussion was Worley's. They have a vendor and they kind of offered it up. Apparently they've partnered with a couple of other businesses in order to get materials with them, but with the notion that we have so many businesses that are, that want to reopen and currently have limited access to materials, that might be an avenue for them to get their toe in the door and rather than getting kind of, I don't want to say taken advantage of, but paying a premium in a, in a, you know, kind of stretched market, they'd be able to work like in a big group and then get, get something cheap that would be, you know, very good. And, and so I guess I'm throwing that out there.
My, my question would be, could we, could Jim Decker be that conduit in contacting businesses and then connecting them with Worley?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I definitely, I don't, it isn't a situation where I think that we have to necessarily do all the heavy lifting. I think it's more so just being a coordinating influence on it happening, because I think that most of them, once they get all connected, will be, you know, they'll kind of work together on it. It may also be something that depending upon the situation, we may want to buy in as well. If, if, you know, if like DPS and others think it's a good idea, I think that getting materials, you know, getting a good, not necessarily a stockpile, but getting some materials in preparation for the fall and winter is probably a good idea. Okay, well, I'll call Jim and talk to him about it, how about that? And then throw, and then forward something to you guys and then go from there.
That sounds good.
That's sound good.
Okay.
Attorney Schmidt. The only other thing that I had, oh, sorry. Sorry, the only other thing I had was I'm gonna finalize the stuff with the mask drive today, so I'm gonna be forwarding stuff to you. Basically, we have one location in Youngsville and then we're gonna have a location here at the courthouse where we're gonna have a receptacle outside and we're gonna put some guidance on the website and have a document that basically allows people to make masks and then put them together in bags and drop them off in the receptacles and then we'll take them, you know, sterilize them and then stockpile them to be used for businesses and for nonprofit service organizations and others that need them, just to enable folks in the community to make masks for the cause, quote unquote. Because there's just so many businesses that need materials that don't have access to them. So I just want to let you know, I've, I've been working with Pam on it. Basically, we're taking one of the recycling bins that's leftover and we're gonna put that outside and then have signage on it and then we'll be putting out a press release once everybody's comfortable with it. So I just want to let you know that we, we've kind of gotten, we're moving forward with that.
Okay.
If you have any, if you have any questions or anything, just let me know.
Sounds good.
And that's it. I promise.
Attorney Schmidt, are you still there?
Yes, I am, still here.
Did you want to retire to executive session to inform us about potential litigation?
Yeah, yeah, there's some updates after the governor's announcement that's probably worth the commissioner's time.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, then we'll close the work session, last chance. All right, then it'd just be the commissioners and Pam and Attorney Schmidt left on the line then. Thank everybody for coming. Take care.
Bye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Looks like Ed's still on.
Oh, there I am. I think that's Ed's shooter.
Okay, well, just give me the green light when you're ready to go.
Everything's good.
Okay, great. Hey, so for the commissioners, what's that?
I'm just wondering, because Pam and Lisa were in the conference room together.
Oh, I see.
Lisa, Lisa left a while ago.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So for the commissioners, I just want to say thanks for, I know you guys will thank me a lot for your help, but I mean, it was a team effort and I just want to say thanks for being good clients and working together on everything. I have, Ben and I were chatting over the weekend. You can see some of the fallout from the governor's announcement. The one website I go to aggregates news from across Pennsylvania. A lot of dissatisfaction right now with the governor's decisions on who's yellow, who's still red. Really, kind of across the state, I saw stuff from Washington County, you know, items from Chester County, Brooks County. And the question that arose was, you know, we're, we're in yellow and, but we still only have one case. And, I mean, is there a way we can accelerate the process to green? Or, or nothing at all, since we know that this one case that has come up has really, has come and gone. So I looked into the matter and the, the idea struck me that, you know, and this was based on feedback that I, you know, Ben was offering, that the public is, you know, interested in, you know, the commissioner's taking a stance more than just writing a letter to the governor, you know, pretty please, move us to green. It's my understanding, the governor hasn't really established what the parameters for green are yet and it's problematic anyways, what he has signaled is that it will be based on testing capacity, but we know that testing capacity is limited, it's hard to get ahold of adequate number of tests, you know, all over the United States. So this is just something that I, it came to my mind, I've researched it and I probably have, well, the first, at first, I was pretty excited about it, you'd understand as an attorney, and as I looked into it more, I have a few reservations, but, you know, we're in a unique situation here where we have two companies from Warren County that right now have an audience with the United States Supreme Court. And it struck me as, is there a possibility, what would make, would it make sense to file an amicus curiae brief, so a friend of the court brief, in support of. brief in support of Blueberry Hill and Caledonia Land Company? I have looked into that matter. I mean, we would have, I think, a filing deadline of, I want to say, May 25th, maybe May 27th. There's a lot of questions to kind of go over, whether those two would really want it there, you know, what would be our specific position? And, you know, and then the logistics of making it happen. Filing that brief would be, you know, one of several different ideas that I came up with, which is, is it worth, for example, what we've seen in other counties, that top law enforcement officials like D As in Lancaster County say they won't enforce the the business closing prohibition by the state, by the governor. And we're seeing that in in other counties around the state as well, or around the country as well. You know, there's the idea of if we had our own health department, you know, could we be the one that's, you know, because we're sort of on the front line of policing different agencies that have licenses, could we act as a buffer? Obviously, we don't have that department in place. It's going to take some time. I don't think it would be clear insulation to, you know, actions taken by licensing agencies, you know, actions that arise out of Harrisburg. So really, I'm I'm sort of opening the discussion to do the commissioners have an interest and appetite in doing more than just sort of waiting for us to phase out of the yellow phase, whether do we want to push for green? Do we want to push for nothing at all? Don't want to take contradictory positions on things. It's a, you know, my my review of the Blueberry Hill case, having read the whole decision again, is that we're almost in completely different positions from the date that this lawsuit was filed near the very beginning of the order, the government shutdown order, where, you know, everyone was looking at the front of the curve, how bad could it be? You know, we're now forty five days in, fifty days in almost, and, you know, the curve's been flattened. You know, we're in apparently aggressive mitigation, but how much, how much is of that attributable to the curve or the government, governor's efforts? And then what's really necessary going forward? You know, there may major questions and if you have questions about the case, I can answer them. You know, if you want to give me an idea of of where you guys are on this, like, it's a sort of just a brainstorm session. I mean, what I see, what I, go ahead, go ahead.
For my part, I am interested in pursuing some sort of relief, but I mean, for one, I'm getting pressure from the public to essentially encourage civil disobedience, and I'm not there yet. So not interested in putting any risk of funding, you know, from the state to the county at risk. So the friend of the court idea is the least risky and has fairly sizable amount of benefit if it works. But what other ideas did you have?
You know, this is, I mean, some of these alternatives have already been pursued. The the bill that was vetoed by Governor Wolf was to give counties local control. I don't think the votes are there to overturn the veto. That bill would probably probably be the remedy that you're looking for vis a vis the, you know, the citizens looking for this. You know, there's a, I think, I would, I would say this. So when I reviewed the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's decision, the only place where they indicated disagreement with the Attorney General's position was that the business owners were entitled to some level of due process in the closure procedure, and that's where the waivers, so the court relied heavily on the due process elements afforded by the by the waiver provisions. And now Governor Wolf, we don't, we don't know how how fair those processes were. The subpoena's been issued, I guess, to the governor. We'll see if he complies. I guess you could make an argument, and I and I think this is an argument that may be pursued by other counties, as it strikes me now, is that this whole creation of regions, you know, plans by region, might create its own due process issues. And, you know, is the, are the counties entitled to due process as a result of the governor's decision to declare one county still in red or still in yellow? It become, I mean, it's, you know, we're still in uncharted territory to a large degree. I think about a scenario where, you know, if we get, in the fall, let's say we get a spike, we get five cases. You know, we have five times the amount we've ever had. Are we going to get pushed back into red? Are we going, are we just going to get pushed back into yellow? I mean, even yellow is a substantial hardship for, you know, all the companies that still can't operate right now. Yes, they're getting benefits and whatnot. But it's, you know, at the same time, the the curious thing about the case with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court was that there was no evidentiary record. The case was basically just heard on the briefs of the businesses and the Attorney General. And so as, you know, fifty days later, we have conflicting information about the mortality rate of COVID, you know, per test and then, you know, overall per capita. If one result that happens a lot with these Supreme Court cases is they call it, you know, a G V R, which is grant, vacate, remand, which is, so the appeal's granted, there's some kind of decision, but it's vacated, the decision is vacated and then sent back or remanded for additional evidence, or in this case, it would be new evidence. I don't think a trial in front of the Supreme, Pennsylvania Supreme Court for its original jurisdiction is a walk in the park for everybody, but you do have pretty serious medical experts, you know, out of U P M C, I mean, making declarations that, you know, the mortality rate is much lower. And I'm not sure this evidence is really being heard out, you know. It's, it is a very complex process, but trying to identify the people at risk and trying to tailor the emergency measures to, you know, not hinder people who aren't at risk or to make them any more burdensome than they have to be, is is the challenge that the governor faced. I think it's, in a way, I think philosophically, the governor did everything that he had to and, you know, in a way, it's, it's for the governor to do everything that he can, use all of his power to keep people safe, and then it's really with the parties who may feel that they're being harmed to, you know, have a third party, you know, resolve disputes about that in court. So.
I guess my question is,
Sure.
What, what is the timeline of this case getting heard? I mean, I don't know how backed up the Supreme Court is, but, you know, is this all going to be over? You know, we've, we've joined something that gets that that gets heard, and I appreciate and understand that, but it's totally in in retrospect at that juncture.
Sure. So they, the Supreme Court required the attorney, the the governor to respond today, which is a little unusual. Usually, when a judge does that, instead of just a law clerk or a general requirement for a response, that's a little more standard. So then the, then the case will go to, basically be discussed among the Supreme Court justices. Do they want to issue a writ? Are four of them interested enough to to actually hear the case? So we are months away. We have, you know, I think.
How many, how many cases do they see a year?
You know, I mean, the.
It's not that, it's not that many.
Right. I mean, it's is five percent out of the, maybe the sixteen hundred, maybe a hundred, you know, they'll hear. So what we would do is, if we were to take any action in the next two to three weeks, the brief would be in support of Supreme Court, please allow, please hear this case. I have, I have an extensive article I I've reviewed. I mean, if you file the writ, if you have an amicus, file a brief in support of the petition, it does slightly improve chances that it will be heard. You know, my review of the case is, I mean, it's challenging without a, without a record to to go on. It's, it's hard. I think the, I think personally Governor Wolf may have opened golf courses up this week. Probably maybe to defend himself with a, an argument that, you know, the Blueberry Hill case is moot at this point. You know, there's a test for defeating the mootness argument, whether, you know, it's likely to recur. It's there. You know, another point that I've been looking at is whether or not, I mean, is, were these violations of the Commerce Clause, there were not Commerce Clause arguments raised in the Blueberry Hill case. Supreme Court can, federal courts can review issues anew if they want to. There's some, they have a lot of discretion in that. There's a case in Michigan that has challenged the governor's actions based on Commerce Clause arguments, but I don't know how far along that is. Would the Supreme Court sit on the Blueberry Hill case, wait for the Michigan case to come through the courts and try to decide them both at once? It's possible. You know.
I guess, I mean, I think my thoughts are the short term, I think it's an interesting idea, but I I'm not so sure that I'm ready or prepared to take that step to be that far involved.
Yeah, I mean, a threshold here would definitely be, you would have to, I think, approach the plaintiffs and see if they want to do it. I think you'd have to really, I mean, Warren County, I think, has done a really good job, you know, responding to the emergency, managing the emergency, and then, and winding things down. And while the constituents are sort of ready to go and get back to business, you know, this case is litigating the front end of the epidemic. Maybe it's something that we get involved in if it does get remanded, you know, if there's an opportunity to build a factual case, you know, I think, you know, I could easily see a Supreme Court justice, you know, questioning counsel for the governor, is, you know, why do you have Warren County in a yellow zone when there's only been one case that was weeks ago? You know, how can't, why can't this be tailored locally? So I don't have any straight answers, you know, final answers for you. I'm throwing this out there as an idea. I just see this, I do see this as a recurring theme, you know, that eventually, you know, our cumulative number of cases will only go up. We we will remain sort of at the mercy of the governor and the declarations about shutdown. And so we're just going to have to continue. So even while now, maybe we have more than we need, we're going to have to keep our eye on this in the future, whether it's the fall. You know, I mean, my, the way I see this, this is not legal advice, but, you know, you try to anticipate the possibility of what happens. They've identified, the virus mutates already. There's at least three different strands identified. It's going to make getting the vaccine a little bit more difficult. You know, this may be with us long term and in the sense that this is like another flu that that we have to deal with. So eventually, the governor's approach may have to evolve, or, you know, we're going to have to make, you know, permanent changes to the way we live our everyday lives. But whether these, you know, businesses have to be shut down as opposed to just implementing social distancing practices, wearing masks, wearing gloves, you know, may be worth review for the constituents' sake.
Jeff, Ben?
Jeff, go ahead.
Ben, do you want to give my response for me?
Did she say Jeff, Ben? I thought, what?
I said, Ben, do you want to give my response for me?
No.
So I can save, so I can save my breath? Yeah, no, so I I get it. But I'm not going to support any of that.
Wow, that was very succinct. Good job, Jeff.
I think that's, yeah. We need to have Nathan talk about these types of things in public meetings. So Jeff, are you for it or against it?
What's that?
Are you for it or against it?
I am against it.
I mean, I think it's worth watching and I appreciate Nathaniel what you're saying, and I just, I just not, I don't know, I'm think I'm, I'm good for somebody else taking the lead and when we've got two businesses already there. And I could easily see the Supreme Court just sitting on this until things just play out with the, with the state.
I think, I think it's a I think that's my biggest issue with it is every, there's so much stuff in play. You'd be putting yourself in a position where you'd be locked in for a period of time. Meanwhile, you know, the county could go to green, there'd be a very real possibility we'd be in the national news. We'd probably have to, there'd be a couple other counties that would jump on board with us, and then it would be a complete mess and it would be, and and who knows, you know, and then again, you're kind of hoping that by the time it gets to the federal Supreme Court that they're going to be friendly to the whole idea. You know, and that, and that honestly, even in this environment, seems like a roll of the dice. So I I think that there are a lot better ways to leverage our position with the governor than to try to go after him legally.
Okay. Nathaniel, anything else?
No, I think that, I mean, I'm interested to hear whatever those are. I mean, not that they would be my ideas, but I I am, I rack my brain in terms of, you see, these businesses that can't operate, what can be done? You know, I don't know I don't know whether it's wise or would make sense to ask, you know, the district attorney, say, hey, we're not going to prosecute. attorney, say, hey, we're not going to prosecute businesses if they remain open. That's obviously a big political gamble on his part. Um, you know, it's, it's, it is this may, the huge sort of unanswered question is that, I mean, as long as the virus is still floating out there, how is the, how is the governor under the current logic operates under, going to let these businesses operate? I, I'm just trying to say I really need a haircut, you know? Um-
I really need a hair coloring.
Like in Lancaster County, how much of their county legitimately is, is run by the state police?
That's a good question, and I don't, I don't know.
Because that's the big, so that's a big issue. Rob Green could say, I'm not going to prosecute anything, or I'm not going to go after people. But at the end of the day, if the state police prosecute somebody or go after them, I mean, Rob Green's going to have to do something, right? I mean, I mean, can he just say, I'm not going to work with you guys? I mean, because that's a problem with being, that's a problem with having a large state police force. I mean, frankly, is that out of Harrisburg, you can basically do whatever you want and then have the state police enforce it, or try to get them to enforce it.
I mean, I, I think, that's a good question. I mean, it seems to me, I mean, in a huge gridlock, if, if, um, they find them like it's a summary offense, you know, maybe the state police wouldn't ask for, uh, representation from the DA's office in front of the district justice. But then if someone appealed it, usually those are always under DA policy everywhere, handled by a rep from the DA's office, and then it would be dismissed or whatever. You know, um, not a good, I mean, if that was the case, not the, the healthiest relationship for, for the DA for sure. Um, I have no feel at this point, uh, what the local, you know, how the local DA would look at things. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's, um, that's really about it in regard to, uh, just trying to address that question. Um, obviously, if we see litigation arise, people trying to find ways to legally challenge the zone designations, you know, other counties, um, we should probably keep an eye on that. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, and these are good problems to have in a sense. I mean, only have in one case, trying to, trying to speed up recovery as much as possible. So I think, Ben, that's all I got. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, um, I'm not going to belabor it. Okay.
Yeah.
Nathaniel, what are your top priorities right now? Like, what are you working on?
Well, after this, um, the one thing that I have to, I have to address is, um, there is, so we, we've applied for, um, a grant slash loan from the USDA for additional, like, emergency radio equipment. And one of the things that, um, it, with the, uh, the federal regulations, apparently the, what we are looking for as far as monetary amounts falls just above their threshold in regard to our requirement to hire bond counsel. And I have, uh, I have wrangled with the, um, otherwise polite rep from Meadville in regard to whether we really need this or not, because it's just so close. And she took it up to her supervisor, this was all before the coronavirus hit, and, um, insisted that, uh, yeah, we, this is inflexible. I mean, the, the logic they offered me was the reverse of what I thought was common sense. So they have submitted the, the application, um, up the line to the USDA. I have to submit, um, my legal services agreement, which is really just a copy of the agreement that I have with the county with, uh, some minor amendments. But, uh, because we were walking away, uh, from my, from, um, our relationship with NOx in large part, um, I have, what I've done is I've set up a call with Chris Gabriel. We're basically, um, I, I'm identifying a need to maybe have bond counsel on, uh, on call for this and possibly other kinds of situations. Who knows if we might need bonds in the near future. Um, so I was going to call Chris. I have a, I have a call set up with him tomorrow, just to see if he has any recommendations. Um, I had a discussion about whether I could put my name on the list. Um, again, I looked at that list before the coronavirus happened. I mean, these are all major firms. They're based in Harrisburg, uh, Philly, Pittsburgh. I mean, I did do the TAN document, but I don't, you know, I don't have a comfort level I'm satisfied with, especially post-coronavirus. Um, I think the world of municipal financing is, um, the waters are a little, little more choppy. And I, I'm not sure, I want to put myself out there as, yes, I'm bond counsel. Like, I handle the local TAN. I handle things as, as necessary. I would feel comfortable handling this UDA, USDA transaction, except I'm not, you know, I'm not on the list, and they're saying I need to be bond counsel. I don't want to put myself on this list just to get the USDA grant. Uh, maybe I'm being inflexible. If I am, you can tell me. Um, but, uh, it's been, I, I think, um, I think if you guys have input about who you would like me to look into for who could be long-term bond counsel for us, um, I think that would make this a little bit easier. Um, at least on, at least on my end. It's, it's not inherently difficult, but, but I just, I need a little, I need some backup. Go ahead.
Yeah. The whole idea, the whole idea was just to save money, I think originally, was that we just felt like for the work that Senate was doing, that we were overpaying them. Um, but that doesn't mean that, like, we want to create a bunch of headaches, you know, unnecessarily, because it sounds to me like logistically, there's a challenge there. So I would be fine with looking for something.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Um, oh, creeps. What was it? Um, yeah, I had something for Schmidt, and what was it? Son of a gun. I can't, I can't believe I didn't write it down. I was just thinking-
Well, we were gonna, we were gonna make sure we were in agreement on the final form of the, um, broadband resolution. Is that it?
No, 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 no. It was actually really important, and I'm, I can't believe that my, um-
Was it the tax, the tax sale thing? I mean, we, we essentially-
So let's see, I started thinking about the Geiger properties, but that wasn't it. Oh, yeah, now I remember. Okay. Uh, so Trish and I have been having conversations with Nancy Freeknock about basically consolidating the RDAs, um, the city and the county's RDA. Um, I wanted you to know that I had a conversation with Nancy and basically told her that our position was that we wanted them to put some kind of proposal together, um-
Okay.
That would kind of outline what they're willing to put in the pot, you know, what they think they can do, what the, how they want to set it up. Because I think that was, that was something that was expressed by Dan and, and Trish at different points. Um, I just wanted you to be aware of that, because I think that probably what's going to have to happen is, is we're going to have to pull you in to help work on a revised ordinance.
Okay.
And, and maybe what I, what I should do is start digging through some stuff, because I just, I think that if we rely on Andrea, it's, it's either A, going to take too long, or B, um, I, I don't know if they're going to, I don't know. I, I, I think that's something that we need to start looking into. Let's put it that way. Um, digging up the old ordinance, seeing what's in it. Um, there's a couple of things that we had talked about putting into it that we want to review, like, you know, giving the RDA a little, like, some land bank powers. And, um, you know, and then there's some stuff related to it as far as like what kind of personnel would be working with it. Um, but I wanted to, to put that on the record, I guess, or throw that out there, just to make sure that that's what is being discussed and everybody understands that.
Okay.
Trish, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I think where we left off, Jeff, was that you were going to talk to Nancy and asked her to put together a proposal. I, I didn't know how receptive she was to that.
She was. She was, she was definitely more receptive than I thought. And she, and I was just very, very straight with her. I said, you know, what everybody's kind of looking for is for you guys to tell us what you got and what you're willing to do. I told her explicitly that we, A, don't have any money.
Right.
And that B, uh, we, there's stuff that we can do, like personnel-wise to help out. Because I think the big issue is, is Dave Hildebrandt, I'm pretty sure is essentially retiring, and, and they're kind of trying to consolidate things over there. So, um, you know-
And she said that to me. She, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh-
So, no, I think that was- So, I mean, maybe what we do is just, you know, try and, if we don't hear from her by, you know, Wednesday of this week or Thursday of this week, we kind of say, hey, you know, are you working on that proposal? What can we expect to see it? And, you know, partly, this, this came about, uh, for the, for Ben and Nathaniel, because she was telling Dan Glott's one thing, and then she'd tell me another thing, and then we got on a call with all of us, and it, and it was a little different. And so, you know, we wanted to step back and say, no, what do you want?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, you know, her request was to find out how this can be done. And it, and Dan Glott mentioned that Lawrence County was able to do it, and to reach out-
Which, which county? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Trish. Which county?
Lawrence County.
Lawrence County, okay, yeah. Yes, okay.
Um, and, you know, that we would try to see if we could actually just model that framework that they already have in place.
I think that's highly feasible. I mean, that's where, uh, Jeff and the crew of us went to, you know, see how they handle some of these, um, redevelopment issues. So, you know, I mean, I'm at their solicitor. I, I, um, I would be optimistic on that approach.
Very good.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
All right. That's it in my mind.
All right. Um, are we, how, how much longer, um, do we think we will want to do, um, the continued emergency declaration process? I can tell you, I think the courts are, are going to do, like, video conference hearings through, I think through next week. And then after that, I, maybe they are going back to in-person with social distancing. Um, I'm just putting that together from the scheduling orders that I've received. Um-
Emergency-
I don't know if you've given that any-
Doesn't really matter, right? I mean, it matters, but it wouldn't matter if we did away with it or not.
Well, for some, yeah, for-
I guess my, my thought would be, you know, now that we're, quote unquote, back in business, um, that we continue to meet telephonically and have directors meeting telephonically for the next two weeks, because that's the whole fourteen day thing. Um, I'm just throwing that out to Ben and Jeff. What are your thoughts?
I think that the, the challenge is, you know, I think that the biggest problem with all of this is nobody really knows anything. And so, we could be here and, and say hypothetically in two or three weeks, there's a major spike, and there's a major issue, and just be making another disaster declaration. I mean, or, or considering it.
Right.
Um, like, we don't really know. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm really, I mean, I think everybody's optimistic, which is good, but it's just this whole, nobody knows how this thing works. I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I, I have my ideas, but it's like WMD, basically.
Right.
Yeah, I, there's no reason in my mind to do away with it. I mean, we're spinning down the EOC largely. We're cutting back on calls, but why would you rescind it? I mean, I just don't see a reason to.
Yeah, I just don't think we're ready to.
Yeah, I think that if we get through May, like, I mean, my, this is my assumption, and this goes back to the other discussion, is I think we're going to be green pretty quick. Like, I think that the reason some of this stuff, you know, I mean, I, I, I think that the, with the, this is the problem with locking everything down, is how do you unwind it and not look like you're just doing it flippantly?
Mm-hmm, right.
I think, I think, I think that you have to start rough and then just fade it into the background. I mean, my hope is, is that we get a call within the next week saying that we're going to go green, you know? I mean, because there's no-
That's possible.
The, you know, yeah, I mean, I, I, like, I've, I've heard different rumors floating around about, you know, that, that that's, that, that, those are possibilities. So what I would say is, is okay, let's get to that, let's, let's see how that goes through May, and then get to that green. And then, you know, once we feel really good about it, then just cut out the disaster declaration, um, you know, if we feel the need to. I mean, frankly, nobody really, I don't think at this point realizes that it even still exists, probably.
Yeah, it doesn't matter today. Really, the only reason it matters is for keeping requests, keeping, it allows us to make requests of PMA whenever we want.
Yep. Well, and like the meetings that we have that are emergency-related, you know, it makes it a little bit easier to navigate them, so.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Um, I will, you know, give everybody, um, updates as we go along. And, um, you know, if we see a need for, um, discussing anything, you know, feel free to propose a schedule, or, you know, we could plan for, uh, you know, another more complete, um, review of everything in the near future. It's really as you guys see fit.
Do we want to go back towards having regular solicitor meetings again, though? Like, to catch up on all the other work?
I think it's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea, even if it's just telephonically, yes.
Yeah.
I can do, I can do my best to, you know, send out something in writing, uh, you know, ahead of time, you know, as far as just a, you know, one or two sentence memo on status, just to be concise. I think that's, that's helpful, you know, if we can spend our time on the phone, on the, you know, on the, the more important things, on your questions, you know? So, okay, um-
One more thing before you go, uh, to, just to continue the discussion about things that I'm as excited about as coronavirus. Uh, what's the status of the Geiger properties?
Geiger-
Because I haven't thought about it in the last few weeks.
Yeah, Geiger, I'm still trying to get, um, get in for a conference on this. I, I guess I have a question or two for you on it. Um, that, it's probably worth going over. You know, I had an idea for when, when the settlement conference actually occurs, um, of inviting the, like, the city RDA, or actually having the judge, um, issue an order requiring the RDA to attend as a potential, um, entity that would receive the property. And I wanted to know if that was something that you guys would be in favor of. Um, I don't know if it would complicate your, uh, discussions that, that you're trying to go through right now, or maybe, or maybe it would be a reason to, um, to in fact encourage the merger of the, the city and the county RDAs. Um, do you guys have any thoughts on that?
No.
I don't want to say no to that. I want it done.
Yeah, I think, I think that the, I think that's the thing, is, is like, I think that's all our position is, is, is like, we don't care as long as it happens, like, whatever it is.
Okay.
I think it's like, I just, yeah, when, so that's right. So we don't have the status conference scheduled yet, we put in for it and this is one of those things that we knew at the time we were gonna have to wait, like, months anyway.
Yeah, I mean, things are delayed with the, the COVID, but, um, we, I will check in with the court this week and I will get you guys an update, so.
That would be good, why don't we just click on that?
Whatever's necessary and, yeah, to put, apply pressure as much as possible.
Yeah, this is, um, this is a side note, it's related. I received a package from the district attorney, this, uh, you know, the courthouse, mail's delayed. So really only a week or two ago, he sent this to me and it was a letter from Andrew Stapleford to the district attorney's office. And it was in regard to, yes, liens, it's in regard to liens held by the city against Joyce Miles slash Frank Geiger. Well, this is a property on Fifth Avenue, like, 613 was Fifth Avenue. It's not involved in our suit. Rob gave me a handwritten note, he said, whatever you need me to do about this, I'll, you know, I'll cooperate. But it's not, it's not involved in our suit. If, it's like, um, it's like it was property that was forfeited by Frank Geiger, but they didn't do a deed, okay? Or something, you know, they didn't do the deed to the commissioner, so we didn't even know about it. So, but, I mean, you know, very privately, if it was, if it was, well, I'll tell you, you can go ahead, Jeff, and then I'll tell you what I was thinking, but go ahead.
So, so what I, I guess what I would say is, is you need to call him and ask him what he means, right?
I think he's just, I, I just don't think he understands the situation at all, you know? I think he's trying to cooperate, I don't, I don't think he realizes, I don't think he's aware of the contents of the, the assets within the Warren County Drug Task Force.
Okay, 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 I see, yep. So, so is there an outside possibility that they have some control over that property and don't realize it?
That's what, uh, that's the city's position. You know, I don't know if that address is right, but, you know, this, I was considering taking this as an opportunity to approach the district attorney and ask if an audit could be done of the drug task force because we can't, I can't solve this, I can't solve this problem for him as it stands, right? I can't solve the problem because it's not a, a property we own. But if, if he uses this as a possibility, it would be a way for the county, the commissioners, you know, we could assert some control over the process. I don't know if I would use the word audit, but the, but you see where I'm going.
Oh, yeah. I am currently attempting to hang myself with my earbuds, just a minute, just.
I think I'm losing my attention span now.
I can't do it anymore. Like, uh, yeah, so I, I guess the, the answer would be to just contact Rob and just kind of ask him what his understanding of that property is, right? And then go from there, is that, yeah, I mean, that's kind of it.
I mean, I, I think it's, I can tell you what my understanding is, is that Frank Geiger signed off on a bunch of stuff in his guilty plea that he was forfeiting in the process of entering his guilty plea and then he challenged that agreement, but the agreement was upheld on a, like, a number of things. And now, only certain of those, only certain of those properties that he forfeited, um, ended up, uh, ended up being deeded to the commissioners and that's where the suit came from. So, so that's where, that's where I think this is, is arising from, is that Frank signed over other property that just didn't make it into a deed to the commissioners.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, is it possible that they still own the property? Like, like that they're, you know, that, and then maybe Andrea doesn't know how to get ahold of them and so she's just sending it to Rob to forward, I mean?
Yeah, she's asking Rob, basically, she's asking Rob to sign off on the property or something. I mean, that's, that was the gist of the letter, you know, it's, or you're, you're an owner, there's a lien, there's a lien on this property, you appear to be an owner based on Frank's forfeiture.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, I also now wanna hang myself, but Pam, please do not put that in the minute.
I can't do it, I just can't do it. Okay, thank you.
There's nothing more, we'll talk to you on later.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.